The zoning board of appeals to order. If you could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Before we begin, I would like to go over a few housekeeping rules. The first, if the fire exits are located to your left of the room, in the event of a fire, will be notified by announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to these exits. You can use either the north or south stairs to leave the building. Do not use the elevators. The meetings are recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time that you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items and orders as they appear on the agenda. There's extras by the door. After the case has been called, the applicant or the representative shall come to the podium, identify himself or herself, state their name and address, be sworn in, and present their case. The zoning board members will then have the opportunity to question the applicant. Then the case will be open to the public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium and identify themselves, along with their address. Director, questions to the board? There are three categories: those in favor of the application, those that are opposed to the application, and anyone who wants to speak about the subject matter on the application. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or the representative will be given an opportunity to respond to any public input. Then it will close the case and continue to the next case. After all the cases have been heard, the board will take a short recess and then return to deliberate each case in order of the applicants. Still present, if any, of the applicants have left, we will go to the next case in order, and so on. In other words, if the first applicant has left and the second case is still here, we will take that second case, then return to the first case after we have completed all that are present. No further input is allowed at this point, but you can stay and listen to the deliberation. If you wish to leave, you can find out the results by calling Planning and Zoning Department tomorrow after 9:00 a.m. or watch the results on Spectrum Channel 1303, and I believe we're visiting the town website. At this time, I would like to call the first case.
Thank you, sir. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1910-1. Upon the matter of request by Narham Construction, acting as agent for Bev Hauser for an area variance, to replace an existing detached garage on a waterfront lot with less than required front setback on premises 1182 Bay Shore Boulevard in an R2 residential district.
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Tom Ursisien, 59 Lincoln Mills Road, East Rochester, New York, 14445.
You raise your right hand? You swear and affirm that anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You can state your case.
Okay. We propose to build a garage that has been, I guess it was hit by a truck and it's knocked it off the foundation. At this point in time, there are no, there was no bolts, nothing to hold it on there. So we plan on putting a footing in, anchor bolts, you know, and then redo the whole garage.
And it's going to be on the same footprint foundation and then same size?
Same size.
Is it going to be same type of materials as the house?
Color-wise, we're trying to stay as close to the color of the house that's existing.
Any questions from anybody else on the board? And this is, this one is sort of, it's pre-existing, non-conforming where it is right now.
Correct.
So you have to come back to the board to get it re-approved if we deem to approve it.
Okay. The only thing I was really concerned about is, it's kind of, as far as not doing something that, you know, with a snow load on it, it just may cause a little bit of a problem.
The way it's, now, you mean, or in the future?
No, not what I said, no. But the existing one now.
Yeah, okay.
Is really, it's really knocked out pretty good. I guess somebody hit it, but they can't prove who did it or what, and it's really, it wrecked it pretty good.
Okay. And again, are there any questions from anybody else on the board? Seeing none? Is anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Please come up, state your name and address.
I'm Bev Hauser. I'm Bev Hauser. I own the property, and of course, I'm in favor of building the garage.
Okay. Is there anybody in opposition of the application? Seeing none, we'll go to the next case.
Just need to close the public hearing officially.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need, this is my first time as chair, so you're going to have to bear with me a little bit. So at this time, I will close that case. Is that what you need? Okay, what do you need me to do?
You can say I'll close the public hearing. It's probably better, best for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I close all public hearing.
All right, next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1910-2. Upon the matter of request by Robert and Roberta Case for an area variance, to construct an attached carport with less than required side setback on premises 63 Florentine Road in an R1 residential district.
Good evening.
Can you state your name?
Roberta Case, 63 Florentine Road.
You raise your right hand? You solemnly swear and affirm anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. We are proposing the construction of a carport attached to the side of our house. It does require a zero setback variance. The carport will be 10 feet wide and 18 feet long, and the main purpose is to keep the snow off our car.
But the one, the post is going to be right to the property line?
Yes.
That's what the zero setback on the side is?
Yes.
And your garage is way in the back, and you have no way to get to it, and so on and so forth?
That's right. It's really more of a utility shed than a garage.
And it's going to be an open carport?
Yes.
Anything else from anybody on the board? Seeing none, I'll open it to public input. Anybody in favor of this application? Anybody opposed to this application? Seeing none, I will close the, what am I, public hearing? Thank you, dear.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1910-3. Upon the matter of request by APD Engineering and Architecture, acting as agent for 1300 Witten Road North LLC, for an area variance, to construct a plus or minus 4,400 square foot, one-story building with less than required parking on premises 1300 Witten Road North Full Heart Childcare in an R1 residential district.
Good evening. My name is Todd Markovich with APD Engineering, 615 Fisher's Run, Victor, New York, 14564. And accompanying me this evening, we have also the facility director, as well as the property owner.
Raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. We're appearing in front of the board this evening to request a parking variance for the existing Full Heart Childcare Center located at 1300 North Witten Road. Do you have a microphone that I could? Does this work? So the existing facility, again, is currently utilized as a childcare center. It's got an existing building in this area, as well as another existing building here. It's about 4,500 square feet in total. It has a small gravel parking area in this vicinity, and then it obviously has some open lawn areas for the children to play in. As part of this project, we are, the owner is looking to propose a 4,500 square foot expansion. There'd be a new building to the south. There would also be interconnecting breezeway to the north. The building to the south would primarily be used for additional classroom space, as well as a new main entrance to funnel all the children down in the southern area. Adjacent to that new building would be a new paved parking lot that would eliminate the existing gravel one, and also sidewalks to, again, bring you to the new building. The parking lot that we have proposed onsite is large enough to contain 29 parking spaces. However, we do also have a, or the owner has a reciprocal easement with the property to the north, in which they can utilize another 26 spaces, thus achieving a total of 55. The way the zoning code is written, we fall under a classification. It doesn't necessarily have a definition for our type of operation, but it requires 4.5 parking spaces per thousand square feet, thus totaling 41 spaces required. In this case, again, utilizing the two parking areas, we actually achieve 55 total, so we meet that. However, because it's not all on our property, we are required to get a variance. So that's, again, why we are appearing this evening. We had sent the town application package, obviously, some time ago now, and have since sent a revised plan and application, because there have been a few modifications. Those modifications are a direct result of meeting with the planning board workshop, as well as some of the questions, comments from the owner, and some small changes. Generally speaking, nothing major. A couple things: we added some landscaping down below, proposed landscaping. We detailed some additional lighting. We actually increased the parking onsite from 27, which is the original application we filed, to 29, and that was just through some configuration of the parking stalls. We did enclose the, or I should say, the trash bins were enclosed with, instead of chain link fence, we have now a masonry enclosure. And then, you know, some other small modifications as well. So nothing major. Generally, it's the same project. In general, just to give you an update as well, we did appear in front of the plan of board last week on Monday, and we did receive site plan approval with a list of contingencies, generally speaking, to adhere to the, or respond to and satisfy the county comments, the town engineer comments, as well as the fire department comments. So we're going to be working with the owner and satisfying those that were no major comments. One of the other contingencies, obviously, and one of the reasons we're here as well, is to, you know, they contingent upon a ZBA approval of the parking variance. So with that, I guess I'd open it up to the board if there's any questions.
My question I have is that the recip agreement with 1326 is only for 10 spaces. It's not for the full 26 unless there's nothing going on at the time?
So, yes, my understanding of the agreement is that although it mentions 10, it's the impression, or the intent is to utilize the 10 for the spaces to the south.
To the south, yeah.
Not restricting the use of the additional property. Now, the one nice thing about the two businesses is that they really are off-peak with each other. So it works well for both parties in that, obviously, weekends are primarily utilized for the synagogue, and these guys are primarily Monday through Friday. So again, it's my understanding is they can utilize the spaces, but obviously, trying to limit to just the southern spaces.
Because when they came, when the Tones came in front of us, we had the same concerns about parking and spreading. Now, how many people during the day do you think they'll have onsite?
So currently, there are 85 students and 15 teachers. Of those 15 teachers, approximately a third of them use public transportation or other modes. So there's approximately 10 vehicles during the day. Now, this facility, its operation is more of a kind of drop-off type situation. So there could be an instance where a parent parks the car, gets out, walks the child, or perhaps just drives in and they get out and go. So typically, you're seeing anywhere from 10 to, you know, maybe at most 12, 14, 15 vehicles at any given time. And again, the operation is such that people drop off at different times.
Just for the daycare?
Correct.
Because that was there on Friday, and it was, between both parking lots, there was like 16 cars already. So what are your plans when you do construction for parking and stuff then, too?
Well, you know, we haven't really actually discussed that yet. That would have to be one of the things that we talk about a little bit, and we may need to talk to the neighbors over here and, you know, have off-hour construction, or we'll have to kind of figure out how to make it work.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody on the board?
What's going to be the capacity as far as students are concerned? Do children are concerned when the new building's constructed?
So my understanding is, with the additional square footage, they would go from 85 and could go upwards, as many as 105 or 108, somewhere in that neighborhood?
What sort of programs are you running? Is it infant care? Are we looking at pre-K programs with set drop-off and pickup times?
I will, I'll default that to Amanda.
I'm Amanda Hellebush, the facility director at Full Heart Childcare.
Name and address as well?
Oh, 1300 North Witten Road.
Can you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. We have infant care, toddler, preschool, pre-K, and we're licensed for school age as well. We don't have any schoolagers right now. We're choosing to keep it on the, with the younger kids, but we don't have, we're open from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and even our preschool and pre-K programs use the full day program, so they're not required to be there. We're not a UPK location where they're 9:00 to 11:30. Everybody's there all day. We don't require that anyone's dropped off by a certain point or picked up by a certain point in the afternoon. So it's, everyone's staggered. There's typically three or four people dropping off at a time.
So when you expand and you're going to have, you're adding a number of classrooms and increasing the number of children, where, how many staff will you have onsite?
Right now, we have about 15 each day, and that should take us up to about 25 per day.
Okay, so imagining you have 25 staff parking within the 10 spots at the other, on the other parking lot, and then another 15, that only leaves 10 spaces. And I've worked at a childcare center before, and I know at 8 o'clock and 3 o'clock, it would be a little hectic, picking up and dropping off.
We don't really have anyone that gets picked up at 3:00. It tends to be between 4:00 and 6:00, just staggered times. And like Todd said, about a third of our staff right now takes Ubers or rides their bike or uses some kind of public transportation. I think I have five girls that take the bus and get off at Witten Road and walk the rest of the way, so we typically only have between 8:00 and 11:00 cars right now for staff. So if that trend were to continue when we hire new teachers, it would be at most, you know, 17 or 18 teachers at a time. When I say 15 teachers per day, too, some of them are working in the morning and then being relieved in the afternoon, splitting their day, so.
My only concern is, I'm correct in assuming that the variance is granted to the property, not to the property owner? So, you know, you couldn't assume necessarily that you'd have the same ratio of public transportation to people driving cars or parking there, and in the future, that could change. I just know parking is a premium, especially when it comes to schools and daycares and childcare. It's a red flag to me, the lack of parking, based on the number of students you're talking about, but I don't know if there's, I even, I didn't, I haven't looked at the details of the agreement with the adjoining property.
We're increasing our capacity only by about 30 children, so we never see more than three or four cars at a time with children being dropped off now, just because everybody goes to work at different times, and it's kind of a constant flow of people.
And I do remember the previous hearing with, with respect to the adjoining property and the fact that timing-wise and schedule-wise, those would be complimentary, but, yeah, it's a concern I wanted to raise.
Yes, according to the agreement, they can have full use on Tones' off-times and vice versa. Tones can use their property on their off-times, and so I'm taking it, I don't know if anybody is there at 6:00 in the morning at Tones or not, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else from anybody on the board? Everybody's quiet tonight. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody opposed to this application? Anybody just want to talk about daycare?
I'd be happy to talk to you if you do.
You should have talked. In that case, I would like to close this hearing on application ZB 1910-3.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1910-4. Upon the matter of request by Jean M. Peyton for area variances, to maintain a front yard concrete parking pad that exceeds maximum permitted driveway square footage in front yard, and to park a recreational vehicle in front yard seasonally with less than required front setback on premises 83 Governor Terrace in an R1 residential district.
Short people, hang on. Hi, my name is Jean Peyton. I live at 83 Governor Terrace, and the zip code is 14609.
You raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm that anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So we have a concrete pad in front of our house that we put there for the sole purpose to park the RV on it during, between April 1st and November 1st. We had it in the driveway, but it was hanging over the sidewalk. The back end was hanging over the sidewalk, and people had to walk around it, so we put in the concrete pad, thinking it was a good thing. You know, it meets, I think, most requirements to be out of the way. When the RV is on the concrete pad, it kind of just hangs over a little bit. I don't know the exact number of inches, but I would say three inches or so over onto the sidewalk. I do know that people can still walk, you know, two by two down the sidewalk. It doesn't seem to impede anybody having to walk around it. That's what I have to say about that. I think in the packet, there was pictures of the RV on it. I just passed out some neighbors that were okay with it. You know, I'd be happy to put some flowers around it so it didn't look so obvious. It's kind of brand-new, so it kind of sticks out because it's on green grass and it's, you know, it's a 31 by 12-foot piece of concrete, so it's a pretty big piece of concrete.
Did you come in and get a permit or anything about parking, or ask about parking the RV in the front?
I was told I did not need to have an RV or a permit for the concrete pad, as long as it met the requirements of being the three feet or so, wait, whatever, it's three feet from the side and four feet from the front.
What year did you put the concrete slab in?
We put it in May.
Of this year?
Yes.
And when you asked about the concrete pad, did you tell them it was for parking the vehicle?
I did. I said it was the purpose of an RV pad. And when we came, I talked to, I think it was Donna upstairs, and the combination of the concrete pad and the driveway makes it 81 feet over the allotted 35% of the front yard for parking.
My only concern is that it's close to the sidewalk, and even though it's, you know, you've got to think about your neighbor backing out of his driveway, and it's a 40-foot vehicle.
It is, but it's not on the sidewalk. I mean, I understand your concern, and I do get that.
I know it's not on the sidewalk, but let's say a kid was going by, and your neighbor couldn't see backing up, what would they do?
I understand.
And, you know, even a kid going down the sidewalk or something, or to fall into it, I mean, it's, you can touch it from the sidewalk.
Absolutely, you could, yep.
Have you looked at any alternatives to park it off-site at any time?
I haven't. I didn't, honestly, I thought we were doing a better thing to get it off the overhang off the sidewalk, and I thought it was a more productive way to park the RV. It's a big RV, and, you know, we can't park it on the road, can't park it in the driveway, so this is what I thought would be the better option, and apparently, it's not. I would have to use, if you guys don't approve it, I would have to use the winter time to figure out what to do. I mean, even an option might be, and I don't know if this is an option or not, just to put it someplace, and maybe a day or two that we have it, we can have, bring it on the pad so we can load it up and get ready to go, kind of thing. There's not a lot of places in Ironic quite that you can store. There is a place down across from Basil's, but honestly, I mean, that's an expensive piece of machine. I don't know if I want it someplace where it's not really being, I can see it from my front house. I can see it with the ring doorbell if we're not home, if anybody does anything to it.
Are you proposing to have it, leave it there all year round?
No, sir. We'd pick it up usually, usually our first day that we go out is Memorial Day weekend, and we have put it, this, for the, this year, we put it away the first of October, the first couple days into October. And we do store it out at Wilkins for the winter, Wilkins RV out in Churchville.
Are there any other questions from the board? I guess, put into the meeting that we have, well, one letter of opposition. It says, "Please forward to the zoning board. As a longtime resident of Town Ironic quite, we feel it necessary to voice our opinion in opposition to case ZB 1910-4 in area variance requests for 83 Governor Terrace. The town code does not allow for paving or concrete parking pads in the front yard of homes. Also, no RV parking in the front of homes. This code exists to protect the residents and their homes preserving an R1 district. Ironic quite has numerous alternatives to alleviate parking, RVs, and other non-conforming vehicles in homes. Consequently, it is not necessary to park these vehicles at homes where they change the character of the neighborhood." And then we have, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, X signatures agreeing with it being okay to park it there. Ellen Accursel, 201...
Ela Candlewood Terrace.
Candlewood Terrace. Greg Sims, 114 Governor Terrace. Genovo Agusa, 115 Governor Terrace. Peter Hitten, Hittness, 220 Candlewood Road. Doris Spire, 37 Governor Terrace. Robert LaPresty, 29 Governor Terrace. Richard Sullivan, 171 Candlewood Road. And Colleen Scott, 181 Candlewood Road. Anybody on the board have anything further to say? I think it's a big RV.
It is.
And it does change the character, and also the safety. I agree with the chairman on that one. Have you looked at the Wegman storage? I know there's a place for RV, one next to Wegman's. The old Home Depot, Hudson Avenue, I think you were talking about.
Up in, on Hudson?
Hudson Avenue.
The old stepping stones, over that way.
So there's a place where you can park on the side. It used to be the Lumber Yard.
Okay.
Which is secure. It's just a big RV.
It is. I agree. It is big. And, you know, is there any way that we could?
I want one.
They're very nice. To the, you know, like a day or two before that we go away, can we at least park it on there so we can load it?
Would you be open to tabling it, to look at other locations?
Well, we still have to load it, though. We still have to be able to put, you know, stuff to go.
Well, you can load and unload, that's not a problem.
Okay.
But as far as, would you be open to, maybe we have more time to look at other locations so that you can find a parking area in the area?
Yeah, I would look into it, because apparently, this doesn't feel like it's going in my direction, so I don't think I have much of a choice, so I'll look into it. I have to, I have to find a place to put it, because... I have to, I have to find a place to put it because Wilkins won't store it through after the wintertime, so.
Sorry.
That I know of. I need to ask them too, so.
Yeah, I don't think that they are to the load or unload is the issue. I think it's staying there when you're not using it.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
Can we have your permission to table it then at this time?
We can. Yes, you have my permission.
Okay. So at this time, I make a motion to table?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have one absent. And the table runs for how long for her?
So we can table and, and, um, until the applicant's ready to come forward with a solution, or until they decide to withdraw the application, whatever, whichever comes first. Or the board can elect to name a specific table until next month, or if you want to table it and have the, give the applicant time to, um, research op, options.
I think I'd like to give you time to research if...
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. This was, um, there is a active or open complaint on the item that came to the town's attention.
Oh, yes. It was at the end of this page.
So just if the board wants to keep that in mind is...
Mr. President, does tabling it kind of put a squash on that complaint, or is it still active?
No, it's still, it remains active until, um, the, this application has been adjudicated. Um, so we would just make a note that the application was tabled at some, uh, record-keeping item on our part.
Okay. Do we have to do anything more with that then? We're all set. Okay. Would, would coming back next month be too soon?
No, I don't think so because it's going to be, no, I think we could do that. If that would, if that's easier for everybody.
Whatever you would like to do, so. One month's good enough for you then?
Sure is. So the November meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll make a note of that. It'll be reflected on next month's agenda. It's a tabled item, and it'll appear on the November 4th agenda as a tabled item.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak opposed to this application? Anybody to want to speak about RVs or trailers or in the front yards? No? At this time, I'd like to close that hearing.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB 1910-5. Upon the matter of request by FM Hayes for area variances to install front and side yard fencing on a corner lot exceeding maximum linear footage and height and with less than required street-side setback on premises 3155 St. Paul Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
Hi there. Francis Michael Hayes, 3155 St. Paul Boulevard.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So I've got a, uh, request in for building fencing, um, not using anything sort of a privacy fencing. It's purely in a wrought iron, uh, but probably black aluminum style, uh, very much in accordance with other fences on St. Paul that have gotten variance in the past. Uh, reason being, um, enclosure of the yard. I have, uh, small children and pets. Uh, St. Paul's a very busy street. Uh, I did list a number of different reasons in the, in the letter as well, um, one of them being a medical concern, um, about a, a child who has a tendency to run away. The variances themselves, uh, within three feet of Le Grand, um, that fence will be in close proximity to the sidewalk. Uh, I think it'll actually add to the neighborhood value. It'll keep vegetation from my, um, property that was there prior to me moving in. Um, uh, it'll, it'll help me basically find that vertical line to keep that vegetation off the sidewalk, uh, make sure that things are enclosed within my yard. Uh, going to the front yard, the second variance is, uh, out front, keeping it above three feet. Um, again, my, uh, my children, especially the ones with the, the, uh, the more active tendencies, could get over a three-foot fence very easily and access St. Paul, and, uh, that keeps me up at night. Um, I'd like something, uh, four and a half feet, uh, in that range, four to four and a half feet. The backend of the letter that I provided you has two samples. One of them is four feet, one of them is four and a half. Um, I would prefer the four and a half be approved, um, as, uh, I haven't purchased them yet. I, I would like to make sure that that it is the, uh, the right fence and, and within the right price point as well. Uh, the third variance would be more than 32 feet across the barrier of St. Paul, or excuse me, about, across the, uh, the, um, uh, parallel length of St. Paul. Uh, however, that will not be within three feet of the property line. Uh, there is a water main, I believe, six feet back. Uh, I'd like to leave that access out, um, or at least readily accessible. So there's no reason for me to push it that much closer to St. Paul within that three feet. So the, the variances themselves are the, within three feet of Le Grand. Um, again, that's, that's for spacing and also the vegetation that's already there. Uh, within the front yard, over the three feet minimum, um, or, or maximum that was previously allowed. And then also more than 32 feet as I have a, uh, almost 85-foot property line. I do have letters in support from neighbors, the adjoining properties, um, and people here in support as well. I know that you've got a full docket tonight, though, so I want to keep things to, uh, as low a time as possible.
You're going to be going, the trees all going to stay, I take it then, is what you're talking about there?
I don't understand the question.
On the Grand Avenue, you're going to be on the front side of the trees by the sidewalk?
The south side of the trees.
Yes.
Yes, so close between the sidewalk and the trees, yes.
And you'd like to have four and a half, but four's okay?
Um, I'd like four and a half.
And you're not looking at, we tend not to really like the ones with the spikes on top, are you looking more with the ones that...
If you don't like the ones with the spikes on the top, those are, the majority of those are the four footers. The majority of the ones that are four and a half have the flat top.
Okay.
At least from what I've looked at and researched recently.
Do you have the letters from your neighbors?
I do.
You can put in the record.
One of them is from John and Dorothy Hayes, uh, neighbors to the south on St. Paul, 3135. And then the other ones are from, uh, Ron Horn and Diane Jones, uh, neighbors to the north on 3165 St. Paul.
Any other questions from anybody on the board? Would, would five feet work better for you?
I haven't researched the pricing on that, um, but yes, the authorization to go up higher would definitely help more.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's from, uh, Ron R. Horn and Diane F. Jones, 3165 St. Paul Boulevard. And from John and Dorothy Hayes at 13, I'm sorry, 3135 St. Paul Boulevard.
Thank you.
And moving on, is there anybody here in support of this? Like to speak? In support of this application?
My name is Deborah Dwyer. I live at 176 Le Grand Road. Um, I've owned the property at Le Grand Road for 42 years. Um, my home is next door to 3155 St. Paul Boulevard, the Hayes residence. Um, I request you approve Mike and Teresa Hayes' request for an area variance so they can install the front and side yard fencing for their corner lot. Six different families have lived at 3155 St. Paul Boulevard since I moved in back in 1977. The Hayes family is the first family, though, to have young children, and I've seen how active the children are, and I have a fear of them running into the road. Drivers turning from St. Paul Boulevard onto Le Grand Road are not paying attention to Le Grand Road. They're worried about the traffic on St. Paul Boulevard. If you're traveling north and you're making an east turn onto Le Grand Road, you're worried about the traffic coming at you from the north, and once that car passes, you pull in and looking at the next car coming towards you. They're not looking at the traffic on St. Paul. The traffic tends to come in at a high, high rate of speed. Um, and if somebody is in that road, an animal, a child, even an adult, um, they don't really have a chance. They would get hit because you just don't have time to, to stop. Um, I've been in that house, the first house on Le Grand for 42 years, so I, I know, I've seen it over the years, but it's never been this type of problem because it's always been older children or adults who could, who could handle that. Um, if one of the children was in the roadway, um, they wouldn't have stopped, time to stop for the, on the, um, they wouldn't be able to get out of the way. Also, if a vehicle is driving south on St. Paul Boulevard, there's a, a wide turn that you have to make, so you don't even see Le Grand Road until you're right there on top of the, whatever happens to be in the roadway. Um, so if one of the children was in the roadway, a vehicle coming from St. Paul wouldn't have time to stop. So for the safety of the Hayes children, I respectfully request you regrant, grant his request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dwyer, what address?
176 Le Grand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody here to speak in opposition of this application? Anybody want to talk about fences? None?
They make good neighbors.
I'd like to close this hearing at this time.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1910-6. Upon the matter of request by Thomas and Cynthia Erickson for area variances to install a fence exceeding maximum permitted height and install a shed with less than required front setback on a through lot on premises 181 Huntington Heights in an R1 residential district.
Hi, I'm Thomas Erickson, 181 Huntington Heights, 14622.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So we're, we recently moved in, in July, and we're looking to put in a, we're looking for a variance for the fence to make it a little taller, to protect our pets in the yard, um, and give them room to roam. Right now, there is no fence there. Um, and also looking for a shed, uh, 200 square foot or smaller.
And yours is a little unique because they call it a through lot? So that makes, if I'm reading this right, two front yards?
It does, and our through lot definition doesn't take into consideration changes in slope or other mitigating factors that would maybe not make it as much of a through lot. So the through lot definition really just envisions a flat piece of land that fronts on two streets.
Okay.
And so it doesn't take topography into consideration.
And, uh, you were looking at a five-foot tall chain link?
Correct.
Black vinyl?
Yep.
Is it? That's considered front yard? Is a chain link okay in a front yard then, and this type?
You, the, the request then, because it's legally considered the front yard, you would also, um, include in the variances, um, not proper type. Yeah. You know what, let me just look at the code more closely before I answer that question. It might just be that the setback is set but doesn't distinguish the fence type. Let me take a look.
Okay, thank you.
I think it does.
Is there any other questions from anybody on the board?
I did get okay from both the neighbors on the left and right side of our house.
You have it in writing from there?
I do that. Yes, I do. I've only got four copies, though, so.
It's handed to you. And the back part of the fence is going to be how, how far from your...
It's approximately 99 feet away from Hoffman.
Hoffman, okay.
So it's a ways away, because that's all hill back there.
The two gates that are up by the house are going to be on...
To be one on the left side of the house, one on the right side of the house?
They're going to, they're going to, they're going to face Huntington, not the side, the neighbors.
Um, correct. Well, actually, they're going to face the private drive. So it'll face, yes, you're right. I'm sorry, excuse me. It'll face Huntington, yes.
That's just the way the arrows are drawn.
I do, I do want to clarify, the fence type is not an issue or subject to variance. Um, the through lot is 30-foot setback from the front and back property line shall be required for all through lot fencing. Through lot fencing shall be limited to a maximum height of four feet in height.
So it's still the one foot?
Correct.
Chain link is okay?
Yep.
The part that's above the front foundation, though, you know, it's, is it restricted to four as well? They're not into the rear foundation line with the fences when they're coming up where the gates are.
So the, the, if the proposed height of the fence is five feet?
Yes.
In, in its entirety, then you're also granting a height variance along the side that's on the side yard portion of the property?
Okay.
So it's the height of the fence is being granted on the entire length of the fencing?
Okay. And we have, uh, letters from, I got two people, and it's Catherine Pell Donigan, 7 Weasner Road, and David Gardino, 161 Huntington Heights. They're in favor of the five-foot fence. Any other questions?
The issue of the shed is that it's in a front yard, per se, despite the fact that it's not taking into the fact that it's wooded and sloped, so it, for all intents and purposes, is a backyard.
Correct.
And it's just 200 square feet, the shed's going to be?
Probably be less than that.
Less than, you're going to be off the property line, not right on the property line?
Correct. It'll be inside the fenced area.
Inside the fence?
Yep.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in favor of this application? On up.
My name is Michael Palermo. I live at 45 Huntington Hills. The, um, Erickson's home faces my backyard. I believe that only I and my wife can see anything other than the driveway in the Erickson's front yard. Their house pretty much encumbers the entire width of their property. Mostly coniferous trees and shrubs fill the, fill all the three sides, including everything but the driveway on the north. If you walk down Hoffman, or bike, or drive, you would have to crane your neck up to see the top and look for a, a fence and/or a, a shed. I think it behooves us to say that this is a positive kind of thing, and it'd be nice if you could see to grant them this variance.
Thank you. Any other, just for me, is the other fences are all coming down, all the chicken wire fences?
Yeah, there is, yeah, you saw that then. There's chicken wire that's going to come down.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Anybody want to talk about fences again? If not, I'd like to close this hearing.
Okay, next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1910-7. Upon the matter of request by Jeffrey T. Resenberg for an area variance to reconstruct two new pole barns exceeding maximum permitted square footage and building height on premises 258 St. Joseph Street in an RR Rural Residential District.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Resenberg, two five eight St. Joseph Street, Rochester, New York, one four six one seven.
You raise your right hand? You swear and affirm everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Anyhow, on May third, we had a disastrous fire at our landscaping business located at two five eight St. Joseph Street, and two and a half of our three barns were destroyed. Two of them burned totally to the ground. All that's left is the concrete floor. And at this point, we're asking for permission to rebuild two of the three barns that burned down. The third barn is still standing. We had to do some significant repairs to it, but we'd like to rebuild the two other barns. The, there was barn number one, barn number two, barn number three. Barn number one and two are the ones that burned. Barn number three still stands after repair. We'd like to build barn number two on the exact same footprint as it was before, on the exact same pad. And instead of being three stories high, it will be two stories high. So, there'll be a reduction in square footage. The original first barn, we would like to move to the middle rear of the property due to the fact that this current fire basically destroyed everything I owned. We had over three-quarters of a million-dollar loss, and I'm not at liberty to discuss much about it because I'm under a gag order from my attorneys. There's still an investigation going on to the cause and whether there's any arson or anything involved in it. So, the investigation is ongoing. I can't say much about it. But we'd like to replace the two barns with two new pole barn structures, which are aluminum-clad wooden frame buildings. And I believe you have my information from my engineer, John Sharaba at Land Tech. He cannot be here unfortunately. He has a medical emergency tonight. He has a lot of the details. I hope he, I hope he would be able to present to you tonight, but I think you've got all the drawings in front of you. And we have some architectural renderings that my architect has drawn up as well. I started to say, I'm sorry, the reason for moving the, the first barn to the rear of the property is that this fire took out all three buildings. And what we'd like to do is put the larger of the buildings towards the back of the property where it's not visible to practically anybody. And for that reason, the equipment will be contained in the rear. And if there were a fire due to equipment, which we don't know what started the fire at this point, if it was due to equipment or gas, that, that it would only destroy one barn instead of three. So, that's the reason to move it from the original footprint to the rear of the property, middle rear.
And that still would be some ways from your closest neighbor to the rear, right?
Pardon me, I didn't?
That would be away from your closest neighbor, how far your?
Yes. Most of the properties along St. Joseph Street are all on the same setback from the road. There's only one neighbor, Mr. Weaver, whose house sits towards the rear of my property. I don't know why it was built that far back, but he's the only person on the street that resides that far back from the road. So, you know, his property's been screened. There's numerous evergreen trees been put in. We spent a lot of money on a vinyl fence two or three years ago to block his view. And we continue to do what we can to, you know, keep it private there. If any of you came down there, I think you'll agree it's kind of difficult to even find the business.
And you're looking at twenty-foot-high instead of this twelve?
Um.
I'm not sure.
Well, I know your elevations are a little different from what one would typically gather because you go to the middle of the roof line instead of the bottom of the roof. Is that correct?
Yes, half, it's halfway up the peak is what the code requires. We, and in order to get?
I get your name?
Pardon? Oh, my name is Joe Resenberg, two three three Harvington Drive. I'm Jeff's father.
Can I swear you in too?
Sure.
Since you're with him? You swear and affirm everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
The two barns that were destroyed had two and three-story for storage. In order to get some storage for different materials, this is what the architect came up with, is going to keep in it to a minimum, eight, nine-foot for the first floor, seven-point-six with a hay loft effect where it's going to be open and the things that we store up there are basically going to, are, what do you got? Hedging, things of that nature?
Building materials.
Building materials. So, this is what he came up with, the twenty-two feet to the center of going up the roof, which I believe is what is in the code. Or what's in the code is how you, they take that measurement.
And the, that's going to be two floors who are open barns?
Yes.
And then the other office building's going to have two floors?
Yes. It's going to be one floor and then just an attic. And with the utility, the furnace will be upstairs in that attic area.
The, the barn that's going to be put up in the rear of the property is essentially a one-story barn. However, there'll be like a catwalk around the edges to store piping, edging, spikes, that kind of stuff, building materials. We need room all throughout the middle of it if we wanted to back a truck in with like a chip box on it and so forth, which is a reason we needed the height for the garage doors.
You're going to, any, you can remember whether plants and trees around in that back area? I know you had the fence up.
Right. Currently, kind of in the middle of the property, we have a fenced-in area where we store our nursery stock. And we have several hundred plants inside of a fenced-in area to keep the deer away, which we water and we sell. We currently grow a lot of perennials and things like that, and we sell them to our customers. We kind of, and in the back, in the rear of the property, we try to reclaim the materials of our business, leaf compost, topsoil, screen it, and resell it to our customers and keep a solid stream of materials coming in, going out.
My question was, are there going to be trees around where the barn is?
Oh, yes. Yes. Currently, right now, there is, you know, if you look at an overhead detail of the property, every tree except for one that you see on the property I've planted in the last twenty years. And there's probably at least forty trees on the property. And we're going to continue to plant them, but obviously, as a lot of you know in the flats, it's difficult keeping the deer away from them. And when this building does go up, I plan on putting more trees in to screen out my neighbor to the south.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody here want to speak in favor of this application? On up.
My name's Alan Sasse. I live at two oh five Van Vors. And I would hope you people would give him whatever variance he needs. It's a thriving business. They're all helpful. They're all kind, and they do a lot for the town. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Hope in favor? I'm sorry.
Hi. I'm Patricia Bydek. Our property backs up to Jeff. I'm at three twelve Seneca Park Avenue. I also own nine acres that back up to Jeff, and the address is two sixty-four, and we're in favor. He's a great neighbor, and it's all woods back there. I can't see anything anyway, so it doesn't bother me. So, we're in favor.
Hi. My name's Michael Smock. I live at two hundred St. Joseph Street, just down the street, two houses from Jeff's property. I just want to say that I think he had, I was there when the, when the, when the explosion and fire happened, and it woke me up. It was like five-ten in the morning. So, and, and the barns were kind of up towards St. Joseph Street. So, I think putting the one barn way in the back where he's going to put all the gas-powered stuff gets it away from the Miller's houses and everybody else's house and everything. So, that's a smart move. I've been down there since ninety-seven, so it's pretty much the same time he's been down there. And I, we don't even notice him. So, he does great work for us, the community. He's got a good business. He, he cares about Aron DeCoit. And I'd like to see him be able to put his equipment back inside because he's been dealing with no storage the whole summer, basically. Because that happened May third, he said. So, he, he needs to put his stuff in. So, I'm for this. I think it's a good business. It's good for the community. It's good for Aron DeCoit. So, I'm for it.
My name's James Bydek. I live at two seventy-four Seneca Park Avenue, one four six one seven. My property is adjacent to my parents' property at two sixty-four. That runs exactly south of where Jeff's talking about putting the barn. I would like to echo what Mr. Smock said. He is a wonderful neighbor. Definitely needs to have the barn go up, and it, nobody really sees it, and he always does a good job of keeping it, keeping the business private from all of his neighbors. So, he absolutely should get this variance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. My name is Griffin Fox. I live at five seventy-five Thomas Avenue. I was a previously, I was previously employed by Jeff for a good five, six years and just wanted to reaffirm that he tries to do his best to make that property look presentable and keep it, keep it excluded from the community in terms of noise and other annoying things that could be happening to neighbors. He's put up the trees in the past couple of years. He's put up that fence. And I know I've definitely helped a bunch making that property look as good as I possibly can. And thank you.
Thank you. And also, at this time, we have four letters in favor. Alice Van Vors, Demond Amanda, and she is at five ninety-one Titus Avenue. One from Jeff Fox. I don't know if it's the same address, but he's got his, his business address, one forty-three Patton Wood Drive. And Gail Fox, five seventy-five Thomas Avenue. And Patricia Cook, two forty-five St. Joseph Street. You okay, Michelle? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this application?
Good evening. My name is Peter Weisar, and I'm an attorney with McConville, Concedine, Cooman, and Moran at twenty-five East Main Street, Rochester, New York, one four six one four. I represent Wade and Gina Weaver, who reside at two forty-six St. Joseph Street. With me this evening is Wade Weaver.
Good.
So, kind of generally speaking, the Weavers are, they're not opposed to reconstructing these facilities on the pads where they existed before. And to the extent that one barn is being reconstructed, proposed to be reconstructed on an existing location, the Weavers are not opposed to that. However, they are opposed to the relocation of the much larger facility back in the property because even though it may not impact other neighbors, it has the greatest impact on the Weavers. And I just want to, I, I submitted initially, I submitted a letter, and if you haven't received it, I apologize. I sent it late this afternoon. But if you need a copy, I have copies. So, I just want to make sure everybody has a copy already.
Only we have copies, yes.
So, I just, I want to highlight a couple of different things. I want to maybe cover three different topics very briefly, and I'm not going to obviously read the letter, but I want to just cover a little bit of the background. Then I want to talk about the elements that apply to a use variant, or I'm sorry, an area variance here, and also some other issues that we think apply to this property. So, we know that in nineteen ninety-seven, the property was granted a use variance, and that was the condition when the Weavers moved in. We understand that. But at the time, there was some conditions imposed, including where they could park a location of vehicles. And as the course of the different variances have gone on, those various conditions have remained where there's restrictions on number of vehicles and where they can be parked. And there's also restrictions on the height of piles of, I think, mulch and some other materials where they're not supposed to exceed ten feet. And the reason why all these conditions are important is because this is still, even though they got a use variance, it's still in a residential district. And if, if, if incrementally, these variances continue to allow the intensity to increase, then it really does have an impact on the character of the neighborhood. And so, we, I mean, we highlight all these conditions in our letter, and, and I'm not going to belabor them now, but there were a couple of things that we want to highlight is in, in two thousand and two, this board granted an area variance for the structure that remains, the twenty-six by thirty-foot, I'm sorry, the, a, a structure that's thirty by sixty and twenty-feet-high garage. That's what was approved in two thousand and two. And, and the condition, the approval was limited to the findings and representations and the testimony regarding the landscape business on the premises. And it also had some findings and conditions that the new barn was permitted to be constructed, quote, "directly behind the larger barn on site, mitigating any potential visual negative impact from the road." That's an important consideration for the road, but that location was also minimizing the impact for where the Weavers live today. At the time in two thousand and two, when they appeared, the applicant represented that they had no plans for the business to grow in size and that the proposed pole barn, along with the other structures on site, would be able to accommodate the storage needs. And then when they appeared in two thousand and seventeen for the use variance, they represented that the business has remained unchanged. So, when you consider the elements, one of the, one of the things that you have to consider is the, whether or not the variance is substantial, and that's the third factor that you have to consider. And this is a, in this district, the garages can't exceed nine hundred square feet unless they obtain a variance. The larger structure is proposed to be thirty-two-hundred square feet. That's three hundred and fifty percent more than would be permitted under the code. And also, the height would be about sixty-six percent higher than would be permitted under the code. And we think that that is substantial, especially where it's going to be located directly in view of the front of the Weaver's house. There's some pictures we put in our materials that reflect that. Another consideration when you consider the elements is whether or not the barns would create an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Now, we know that it is a large site, and it is, we know about the flats, but the site is still located in an RR rural neighborhood. And, you know, these footprints are, are proposed to be well in excess of the original barns, is my understanding. And that's going to have a significant impact, especially on their neighbors to the south, the Weavers. Another question I had in reviewing your code, actually, also, it refers to an accessory structure like a garage is not supposed to have a larger footprint than the principal structure. And I, it's not clear to me if that's included as, as part of this application or if that is even, if I'm reading that provision correctly. But I don't believe that they've sought relief from that, and I think that that does apply and that they would need to seek relief from that provision as well about the footprint being larger than the principal structure, which there's still a home on the site, is my understanding. Consideration of the other factor? Um, consideration of the other factors, uh, you know, we do believe, the Weavers believe that, that, uh, the benefit could be sought by the applicant from, um, you know, from several other feasible methods besides granting the requested variances. And, uh, for example, we think that the applicant could build the barns on the sites of the original structures. Um, these locations were more concealed from the view and would have a less impact on the Weavers. And, um, you know, that, that would be my client's preference. You know, we think that when you balance all of the five factors, that there's, you know, they all really weigh against granting the variance in this case, except with respect to the, the smaller structure that's proposed to be rebuilt on the same site. Um, finally, I just wanna highlight, in, in my letter, we talk about a number of items where we, we believe that, um, prior conditions have not been complied with. And there's a couple of different things that, that we are concerned about, that, that seem to be increasing the intensity uh, of the use on the site, that we think probably would require a revisit to the, um, the use variance. Because these things seem to us to be increasing in, um, in the intensity of the use. And granting this larger structure would allow them to continue to do those things. And I just wanna highlight those. That would include, um, the permanent onsite, uh, topsoil screening machine that's, that is in operation for screening excavated material. My understanding is that in the prior applications, they indicated they, it was, uh, they were doing their work off-site. But this machine, I, I understand, makes a lot of noise and they use it on the site, which has an impact to their neighbors to the south. Um, we understand, we believe that there's also a, an, an ongoing or a, a repair shop on the site, which also allows for testing and, um, you know, repairs to be done. And then the machine testing on site, which also causes a lot of noise and in this residential neighborhood. Um, another, uh, we also believe that the greenhouse was constructed and that that seems to be an expansion of operations beyond what was approved on the prior variances. And, um, and finally, we understand that the, that, um, the applicant may be storing materials on a neighboring property, which would seem to me to be, you know, causing a, a different change of use and a residential use on that other property as well. But, um, the rest of our materials are, are set forth in our letter. And, um, and we would just request that the board, uh, deny the request, at least with respect to the larger structure that's proposed to be, uh, right directly in front of the Weavers. And alternatively, if the board is inclined to grant, um, the relief for that structure, that they impose conditions, uh, requiring compliance with prior conditions and also, uh, some vegetated buffers, uh, to screen the impact from the Weaver's property to the south. I don't know if Mr. Weaver has any.
Um, no, he pretty much explained everything for me. So, just that we're a little concerned, cause our property value did drop and we had our house reappraised. And, uh, I just don't want it to drop down again. Usually your house value should go up. Ours went down. We had a appraisal a little over a year ago.
What was the two appraisals? What were the two appraisals?
On my property value, it dropped, it, it, well, the person who appraised it said it was, it'd be a, he was figuring a thirty thousand reduction. And the town didn't work with him, so he had to take it to court and they just, the, the ruling was split in the middle, fifteen thousand.
So it was a small claims assessment review and a tax, uh, and a tax matter.
So was it a tax matter or was the value of your home?
Pardon?
Was it a tax matter or was it the value of your home?
The assessment was dropped as a result of a, uh, small claims assessment in the, uh, a real property tax proceeding.
But that has nothing to do with whether or not the value gets next to a business or not. That's a tax issue, right?
I believe that, I, I disagree respectfully. I think that the reason why there was a reduction, uh, I understand was because of the, uh, proximity to the commercial use next door.
Okay, can we get clarification on that?
What type of clarification would you like?
Of why he lost value or why the property was reduced? Was it because of?
I'm not sure that this board's gonna be able to make that determination. That's, uh, subject to a review by the assessor's office. And typically, that's a real property.
No, I, I'm, I'm just asking, he's claiming that we shouldn't grant a variance because his tech, cause his value went down. So the question is, is this an issue of a tax assessment, which I agree with you? Or is it an issue of the business cause, the loss of value?
I, I think what they're trying to state is that they challenged their town assessment. It was not changed by the town in their favor, so they took that to small claims court. And the claims court agreed to give them, um, a, a compromise at fifteen thousand, even though they asked for thirty. And their main argument in saying that the assessment should be lowered by thirty was the presence of this business next door.
And it seems to me that those, that consideration will be relevant to some of the factors that this board would have to consider, including factor number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Um, because of the prior impacts, it's already had a, a negative impact on the value of the property. And also factor number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse, uh, effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district.
But, but that's a red herring, because you're saying, because one person decided something that is, Mr. President, I don't think that has any bearing on what we have to decide tonight. Uh, I think if you argue your tax value should be lowered for any reason, it, it, it doesn't necessarily prove that it's the existence of the business. And then what we have to decide tonight.
You know, i- if I could, you know, add my two cents here. I, I do think that if, if there's proof that the value of the property went down and that was in part because of the applicant's property, I think that, that certainly goes to the standards that you're to consider as part of the area variance. Um, right now, we have it from, you know, counsel's oral testimony that that's what happened. You know, if, if, if counsel wants to provide a copy of an assessment or, or appraisal of the property or something, some sort of evidence to document the decreased value of the, the neighbor's home, uh, I think the board can consider that. And, but that's just one of the many factors that you can consider in the area variance.
I stand corrected.
Unless there are further questions, we don't have any more, uh, any more comments to present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, would you like to respond to anything we said?
Thank you. I don't know if you need me to respond or not. But what I'd like to say is that the new buildings will be brand new, beautiful buildings that are replacing hundred-year-old buildings that were deteriorating. So, the, the resultant appearance should be even nicer than it was before. And then, like I said, we're gonna do some site improvements as well. And the Weavers were aware what they were buying when they purchased their property. They moved in after I was already there. And it's kind of the analogy of buying the house next door to the kennel. And then five years later, you complain that the dogs are barking. I'm sorry they don't like living next to a landscape business. We do the best we can. A lot of you who are down there kind of saw that we load our trucks, we conduct our business for an hour, hour and a half in the morning, and we leave. And then we come back and we put our stuff away. He makes, uh, reference to the fact our business has grown. Our business has barely grown in ten years. We've capped out. We're not employing more people. We're not buying more trucks. We're at the size we're going to be. You know, the flats has a long history in agricultural use. And it blows me away that they claim that this is not a appropriate use of the land down there. We grow nursery stock. We produce topsoil. And the stuff leaves the property and we, we manage the waste stream. Uh, my business is a blue collar business and so is the paint shop next door to me. So is the plumbing shop across the street from me. So is the landscaper down the road from me. That's what the flats is. And a good friend of mine came to my first zoning board meeting and said, you know, the flats is the good, the bad, and the ugly. That's what it is. We all work. We work hard. And for the most part, the neighbors enjoy each other. All the new structures, including the greenhouse or cold frame house, which it technically is, are in the site plan prepared by Land Tech. And we even move these structures and screen them in so that the Weavers would not see them. We've done everything in our power to appease these people and it still keeps on coming up again. So, I'm sorry that my neighbors do not want a landscape business next to them, but we're not going anywhere. We're gonna keep on running a good business, solid business, and keep it a neat and tidy property. Thank you.
Jeff, if you could hang on for once. I, I'm just, I'm curious about, cause I'm generally inclined, um, to, to be in favor of variances that are in a sense grandfathered in, that, you know, building's destroyed, you can rebuild it. There was a garage, we heard a case about a garage that was damaged and somebody's proposing to rebuild a garage on the same footprint. This new building is larger and closer to this other person's property. Is there, I mean, one of the factors we have to consider is alternatives to your proposed plan. Is there, are there specific reasons why, um, uh, more similar structure in a location more similar to where it was before couldn't be constructed instead of a larger structure closer to your neighbor's property?
Right. No, it's, that's a very good question. As I said earlier, we'd like to move the property to the middle rear of, of my property. And keep in mind, we have a five acre lot. And the attorney speaks of a nine hundred square foot, uh, garage, which is based upon maybe a five thousand square foot average footprint of a home in Arondacoit. We're talking about a five acre lot. And I would like to move the barn to the middle rear of the property for safety purposes. In the event there is a fire again, that it would be contained to one building and not all of the buildings. And, you know, to be honest with you, why inconvenience neighbor number one to my left, instead of neighbor number two to my right? One or the other is gonna have a view of the barns. But like I said, they're gonna be beautiful buildings. It is an agricultural area. The flats is unique to Arondacoit. Five acre parcels. It's farming land. And, um, the attorney and Mr. Weaver have provided pictures to you. If you look closely at the pictures, the structures that you see in his pictures are the paint shop to the left of my building. It's not my barn. There's other factors in the flats, but it appears irrelevant to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I was gonna ask staff, have you had any complaints on the property about not complying with any of the other, um, you know, the mulch and all that?
Any complaints that the town has received, code enforcement goes out and enforces. Uh, there are no current open or active complaints on the property.
Thank you.
Did, is the public hearing still open or did that?
Yes, I haven't closed it yet.
Okay, I'm just, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I'm trying to get some information. And, and I, I, to me, I, I'm just wondering if we can reserve time to, um, get into this a little more, um, if we can postpone until the next meeting or, um, I'm a little, I need more, for me, more of what's going on and not going on. We'll put it to the board if they were interested or not, or if they wanna proceed, we'll proceed.
I agree with you. I think we should look into, this came up last time when he, when he, when the barn first came down. And I think, I'm not sure, the decisions were, um, we gave him the, I think the decision was that it didn't make sense for him to keep coming back every five years. And that's where we changed it to, um, approving his business, uh, for its current location. There are safety issues, there's fire. I, I think I would tend to agree, uh, with the applicant that moving it to the middle of his property. Uh, but I also wanna look more into the, um, the past, um, board decisions. Uh, even though I think last time we decided that that wasn't relevant. Or it was relevant, but, but not, not in this case, when it came before, it's a few months ago.
Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'd agree. I mean, we didn't, uh, I, I don't think the board was aware of, um, the, the neighbor's concerns more than thirty-five minutes before the meeting. So, um, I think it, it, I, I'd appreciate some more time to, to consider those things, um, uh, beyond just tonight.
So are we asking to table this until the November meeting?
Yes.
I still got a lot of questions, so I'd like more time.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, whatever everyone decides is fine.
I would, I would like to ask the applicant, the impacts of a month's delay. So we know.
If we have to wait a month, we'll wait a month. I'd prefer that we decide now. However, the, the decision is up to you. Time is somewhat of the essence to pour concrete, to get these buildings up. And I had a difficult time even getting bids, and then the bids were not very reasonable. And we finally found a contractor who's ready to break ground as soon as I have a decision. So, somewhat time is of the essence, but, uh, I respect the decision of the board.
I think, I think based on that, I'd like to make a motion to table for further information.
We do it at this time, then?
Just need to close the public hearing first before you make that motion.
Okay. I'd like to close the public hearing at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You make it now? Being done, can I move to table it?
Yes, Brad. I second, second, Andre. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And at this time, we'll deliberate for about ten minutes and then we'll come back and make our decisions. Eighty-two Bay Shore Boulevard?
Regrets.
Yeah. Sixty-three Florington? Thirteen hundred Witten Road North is here, right? Eighty-three Governor Terrace isn't that? Tickets table. St. Paul's here? And Huntington Heights, right? Into those three first. So, we're gonna do ZB nineteen-ten dash three, which is the area variance for thirteen hundred Witten Road North. We're missing one member.
Oh, Tim.
Just give it a couple of seconds.
Should we all applaud when he comes down? We should never do that. That's not nice. Wave to him.
Slow clap, slow clap for Tim.
Okay.
Apologies, Tim, that was my idea.
We can continue now.
ZB nineteen-ten dash three, we need a, it's a, it's a unlisted type one. So we have to get a negative declaration on it?
Should be for, are we on Witten Road?
Yeah.
Witten Road, thirteen hundred.
It's an unlisted action.
Unlisted action, okay.
So it's for the purposes of seeker, it's an unlisted action. You have a part two and part three EAF, short EAF in front of you that I've provided. And you'll, you'll see that in part two, I've checked no or small impact may occur on the items listed one through eleven. And in part three, even though it's not required, I always provide a little bit of an overview of why, why it's answered the way that it is. And so in looking at the, this area variance is to allow shared parking on an adjacent lot. It's an unlisted action for the purposes of seeker. The proposed action is minimizing the amount of new pavement required to meet the expanded childcare facilities required parking per the town code. The design of the site will minimize any potential impacts associated with physical development of impervious surface. And so for this reason, we're recommending a negative declaration for the purposes of seeker.
Okay. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion for the board member to, for the negative declaration? Have a second? Who was it? Andre?
I did too, so either one would work.
Andre? Okay.
I beat you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. No abstentions, and we have one person absent, or two, one person absent. So, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Now, on the motion of board members for the area, for the use variance?
Area variance.
Area variance?
Yes.
Okay. For thirteen hundred, I have a motion by anyone?
I'll move, excuse me, I'll move that we approve it for the area variance with, as I said, I have the reciprocal parking agreement. I don't believe this change will significantly, significantly impact the character of the neighborhood. And I don't believe it's, it's not a significant variance, especially with the reciprocal parking agreement available to them. I don't believe that it's gonna have, the proposed variance will have adverse environmental impact on the neighborhood or in the district. And I, even though, again, it was self-created by the fact they're gonna expand the operation over there, I don't believe that'll preclude us from granting the variance.
I'll second, but I have a question for staff. Should we enter the reciprocal agreement into, into the minutes to be followed? There's a twenty-twenty, it's terminated in twenty-twenty, and then there's one year contracts after that?
So you can make your decision or your approval conditioned upon the agreement. So as long as the agreement is in place, the variance stands. And so that if a condition would change and the reciprocal agreement no longer was active or in place, that the, the owner or occupant of the building would need to come back before this board to entertain a different or some different arrangement or variance.
So is everybody on board with having reciprocal agreement put in to the record?
I, I mean, I still have concerns about the expansion and the lack of parking. I think you're doubling the, the space that you're using for childcare purposes, which increases the number of staff, increases the number of children. You know, there's a high demand for childcare right now, and a shortage, a shortage of providers. And I firsthand have seen the challenges that are faced with parking traffic issues. And I, I don't want to overstate it, but I am concerned about the fact that we're really, you know, almost, you know, losing space. I mean, I, I understand that there is a reciprocal agreement, but the way it is right now, you're doubling the capacity based on square footage. I know that they gave estimates as to what their enrollment is and what their current staff makeup is. That doesn't mean that's what it will continue to be. So yeah, I just, I, I do have concerns about that.
Anybody else?
All right.
Any other discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. One absent. Five, four. One against. Motion carries.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't get the second on that one.
It was me.
Oh, okay.
Next is gonna be ZB nineteen-ten dash five, which is thirty-one fifty-five St. Paul Boulevard. It's a type two action for secret purposes. Do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll move that we approve the variance as, as applied or as written. I don't think it's gonna affect negatively the character of the neighborhood. The style of fence that he's proposing is in line with fences of houses in the neighborhood. I don't see a lot of alternatives, given the placement of the property and the traffic there. Having young children there, I think safety is paramount. I don't believe it's substantial. We're talking about a one-foot variance in height. The property's sort of odd being in a corner where your address is St. Paul, your driveway is on a side street. So the, the length of the fence, I don't think is super substantial, given the actual shape of the property. I can't see any negative environmental effects. And the, the issue is self-created in a sense. But, you know, the, you, you can't control the traffic and the safety issues that there are surrounding the house. So I move that we approve it.
The only thing I would add is, would you object to up to five feet?
Yeah.
I'd, I'd, I'd move that we approve a five-foot fence. And a full, a full, what is it, one-foot variance then, for the height of the fence?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we should probably, because I don't, I mean, he's, he said he hasn't looked at estimates yet, four or five. But I mean, if he wanted, I think we should write it where if he wanted to, he could.
Up to five feet?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd amend my motion to include that.
Does anybody second it?
Second.
I was going to.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It takes us to ZB nineteen-ten dash six, that's one eighty-one Huntington Heights. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the application as, as written or requested. Had a chance to look at the property and, and as far as the fence and the shed, as Ms. Ivors talked about, the fence is appropriate style and position. The shed is not going to be on the property line. I think as one of his neighbors said, Mr. Palermo, the, there's gonna be no obstruction from other neighbors. So it's not really gonna change the character of the neighborhood. The way that his property is laid out, he has a two-front yard. But as, as we can see on the map, that it would really, the shed would be, would really be going to the backyard. You know, just based on the layout. And I don't think it would change the character of the neighborhood as far as, you know, a lot of people in the town of Arundicote have sheds and fences. And I, I suggest that we grant the application as written.
Second. Well, you can do both of these together, the shed and the fence together then? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're all set? Go back to, let's see, ZB nineteen-ten dash one, eleven eighty-two Bay Shore Boulevard. It's a type two action for secret purposes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the variance as written. I think it'll improve the character of the neighborhood. They're replacing an older structure with a newer one. I don't see any alternatives. As he said, the structure is damaged, so leaving it there could be dangerous. It's not substantial. You're replicating a structure that was there previously. I can't imagine any adverse environmental effects or I can't imagine any adverse environmental effects, replacing something that was already existing, and again, not self-created as the structure existed prior to the damage occurring.
And with the condition that it's on the same footprint that is already there? We can put that into there too?
If it's part of the application, if that's, if, by him stating as, by Tim stating as submitted, it's in, embedded into that motion?
Do I have a sec, do I have a second?
Second.
Serious.
Gotta be faster. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda then is sixty-three Florentine Road. It's a type-two action for SEACER purposes again?
I will make a motion to approve as submitted. I see that they have modeled the carport to be very similar to their next-door neighbors. All neighbors seem to be in favor on either side, and I don't think it will make any significant difference other than actually making the property look nicer. And it's my first one, you guys. I'm really excited.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two, three, four, five, six. Still six here, and one absent. Okay. We have one more? No, Governor Terrace is tabled, and so was St. Joseph's, so that should be it. And we have one item left, is the minutes from the September meeting. If y'all had a chance to read them? Has anybody got any questions? And Chairman Hemen isn't here, Mr. LaPerry isn't here. So it's Andre, and Tenny, Scott, Travis, and Bickett that can... Have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as, as presented.
And I'll second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm gonna abstain, cause I wasn't here.
Oh, did I mention your name? You weren't here, yes. One abstention. Thank you. With it, I will close the meeting.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Oronacote Zoning Board on ICAT Government Access.